City Council Ordinary Meeting, the 20th of June 2024, starting at 9:20. We'll be slightly, a little bit later because of the previous council committee meeting. I call attendance commencement. We have all councils here except for the Deputy Mayor. And I guess later on we'll move a leave of absence for her. In the meantime, I'd like to do an acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and the waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. I'll now move on to the opening prayer, and we're very fortunate this morning to have Pastor John Meath from the Vision Christian Family. I'd like to invite you up, Pastor John, to the election. Thank you, Pastor John. Do you mind saying your name, what church you are, and feel free to talk about a matter that's at your church or your work.
Sure. Thank you, thank you. My name's John Meath. I'm the pastor at Vision Christian Family over there in Bundamba. And it's really great to be here today, really appreciate the opportunity. And I did want to, my first meeting here since the elections, I just want to take the opportunity to congratulate both the returning and the new members of the council. And also want to thank the, the city council for its ongoing support through community event funding, which certainly enabled us as our church to host our annual Free Family Fund Day, which just gives a, gives a platform for about 900 of our local residents to have a, a free morning with families over, with various events. So I really appreciate that. So I'll just move on to the prayer. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this gathering today. In your Bible, you have said that we should always pray for those who exercise governance in whatever community we may find ourselves a part of. In such prayer, we pray for the individuals concerned in civic decision-making, especially our councillors here today, but also for the city council staff who assist and help carry out this governance. We know that community decision-making is far from easy, for it is often challenging, given the diverse interests and preferences of the people in our community. Therefore, we humbly ask for your enabling wisdom, your grace and your guidance upon each of our elected members today in their deliberations. And we extend a blessing to our community as a whole. We understand that many people in our city do struggle to meet the demands of daily life. And we pray that the work of this council overflows into a tangible blessing upon each and every person in our great city. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor John. Bless you. Item four, apologies and leave of absence. I'd like to move a leave of absence for the Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnick. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Tully. Any discussion? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour? It's unanimous. Thank you so much. Item five, a condolence. Has noticed we have a condolence motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council convey condolences on behalf of the citizens of the city of Ipswich to the family of the late Karen Patrick Butler, who passed away on the 29th of May 2024.
Second by councillor Nellie.
Karen Patrick Butler was born on the 15th of March 1950, and his family lived initially at Kelsey's Farmhouse, Old Logan Road, past Gales, near Sandy Creek, before moving to Goodna. Karen lived at Woogaroo Street, Goodna for most of his young life and for all of his adult life. He was called up for compulsory national service in 1970, serving for the ensuing two years in 1971 and 1972, and celebrated his 21st birthday away from his family in the Australian Army as a conscript at the height of the Vietnam War. Back in civilian life, he worked for the Department of Main Roads, but soon developed a lifelong interest in racing greyhounds. The height of his career as a greyhound trainer was his win in record time in the Johnny Walker final at the Gabba in May of 1985, with Town Hall Flyer, owned and named by a local Ipswich alderman. Karen was known over the years by his many friends as either Jimmy, Butsy, Lord Mayor of Goodna, or the Colonel, so named after a lookalike southern fried chicken American entrepreneur. He worked as a volunteer at the Goodna Rugby League Club and with the Goodna Rugby League old boys, as well as assisting many people over the years in the Greater Goodna community, often performing tasks such as erecting a new fence for the princely sum of just a carton of beer. He tirelessly promoted the naming of the Eddie Gilbert Field at the former Wollston Park Hospital, and the official naming of Dingo Hill at Gales, discovered by John Oxley in his famous voyage up the Brisbane River to Goodna in 1823. At the age of 38, Karen was struck with cancer and endured the after effects of major surgery for the next 36 years of his life. He passed away peacefully at the Ipswich Hospital on the evening of the 29th of May 2024, with his sister Maureen at his bedside. A beautiful ceremony was held at the Centenary Memorial Gardens at Wakeholme on Friday the 14th of June 2024, attended by almost 150 friends and major acquaintances. The service was provided, presided over by Ron Oostenbrek. Blair Hope, Karen's great niece, wrote a beautiful poem which was read at his funeral with these concluding words. "The Colonel of Goodna, a one of a kind. He lights up a room all of the time. Loud and proud always, had stories to tell. A butler boy Goodna knew so well. A generous person to others in need, a caring person you will always be. R.I.P. Karen, always know. We love you dearly and miss you so." Varey, Karen, Jimmy, Butsy, Lord Mayor of Goodna, the Colonel, may you rest in peace.
Thank you very much, councillor Tully. Item six, tributes. There are none. Item seven, presentation of petitions. And we do have a petition before us today, so for 7.1. And it's a petition on the, to enforce stricter penalties for uncontrolled and threatening dogs in River View, Queensland. And this petition is submitted by River View resident Mrs. Bridget Cezeneas, requesting council's consideration in relation to a petition entitled Enforce Stricter Penalties for Uncontrolled and Threatening Dogs in River Queensland. Does anyone have any questions on that matter? In that case, I'll move that the petition be received and referred to the relevant council department for investigation, and report back to the appropriate council and committee and meeting. And do I have a second for that? I'll, I'll probably come back to, I'm sure yourself, councillor Matt, in your chair, of your committee. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Matt, to second it. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank our River View resident Bridget for initiating this petition and raising her concerns. Through this petition, Bridget and other River View residents have shared their experiences of frequent encounters with aggressive roaming dogs in their local streets. These encounters range from intimidation to attacks on people and their pets. Unfortunately, these experiences are shared by far too many in River View and in fact right across Ipswich. While everyone should be free to walk their suburbs without fear of a dog attack, clearly many aren't. You know, regularly I'm contacted by residents about dogs off-leash in our, in our public spaces. And, and it, it impacts on the, you know, the quiet and peaceful enjoyment of those spaces by many residents. Dogs can be wonderful lifelong companions, as we all know, but their ownership does come with lifelong responsibilities, both to the pet and to our community. To the community, dog owners are responsible for ensuring their dogs are securely confined to their property, that they don't chase, harass or attack any person or animal, and that they're kept on leashes in public areas, which sadly isn't always the case. Regrettably, the community is frequently endangered by the minority of owners who fail to meet these basic responsibilities. Given the laws regulating dog ownership in Queensland are both at a state and a local level, this petition comes to council at an opportune moment. At the state level, in April this year, we know after significant public consultation, the Queensland Parliament amended state legislation that regulates dog ownership to significantly increase the penalties to owners whose dogs attack, seriously injure or kill. At a local level, council is about to commence the first review of our local laws since 2019. As part of the review process, council will seek community's feedback on potential changes to local laws. And I look forward to this opportunity for residents to have their say, including on local law number six that regulates dog ownership in Ipswich. Thank you again to Bridget for initiating the petition. I note Bridget to outline six practical measures to reduce roaming and threatening dog. And that includes increased fines, mandatory training, stricter leash laws, immediate empowerment, community awareness campaigns and council door knocking. And I request that the department consider each of these individual ideas or initiatives and respond to those in the council report that will come back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yes, through the chair, and thank you, um, thank you, Mayor. Look, I'd like to reiterate what councillor Doyle has said, and I'll highlight a few extra points and maybe go over a couple of them as well. But more importantly, I'd like to thank Bridget for undertaking this. When you have a, an active citizen undertaking such a petition on something that generally the community is deeply concerned about, it just shows that there's a lot of thought that's gone into it and certainly a passion that's gone into it. And as you may recall, I held the position for many years that I oversaw animal management on this council. I'm lucky to have it back again to a, to a certain degree. And I'll be following this through, this petition through the relevant department to ensure that her petition gets the consideration that it deserves. And more importantly, I'll also take this to the local government association's Animal Management Task Force, the contents of it, just to show the feeling that is in the community for some of these things. And of course, that task force is at the forefront of meeting with both the minister and the relevant state department on implementing further changes to the Animal Management Act. So hopefully some of these things will see themselves in state legislation as well. And as councillor Doyle intimated, there is a local law review going on under councillor Tully, that both councillor Doyle and I are on that subcommittee, and I look forward to doing that as well. It's, it's very important to note that even though the community have a great concern about animal management, it's actually the responsible pet owners that are really at the forefront of saying that we need to do more in relation to animal management to ensure that those that are irresponsible are held to account. And just as importantly, I notice that her sixth request, which is the door knocking, that is something I think we really need to look at, because it tends to be those people who don't even go to the extent of registering their pets, that are the ones that tend to be the most irresponsible pet owners. So I certainly think that item six in her request is one that maybe we should be considering in the near future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Nellie. And yes, you do have a long history with this area. And I note that some of, that most of the suggestions are state legislation that will require. The LJQ, the behest of councils, have been leading this for a number of years, and I think councillor Nellie, you're going to be on that, that task force. And we've found that the penalties under the state legislation are, are they too soft or too harsh? There's, we're asking for a, a range of other options when it comes to penalties in regards to that to, you know, for pet owners. So yeah, most likely would come back to your committee too, councillor Nellie. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 7.2, and it's a response to a petition that came to us. So this is a report concerning a response received. We had a petition that came to us at the council ordinary on the 25th of January this year. And we've now received a response from Minister Leanne Leonard, the Minister for Environment, and the Minister for Great Barrier Reef and the Minister for Science Innovation. So we'd like to table the response from her and also the clerk of the parliament. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Cullen.
Thank you. And speaking to this, this petition on the odour issues at Swan Bank Industrial Area, the Ipswich community cares deeply about this issue that has been impacting increasingly more suburbs for over a decade now. This response from Mr. Leonard is a result of a concerted effort from community groups like Irate and Stop the Stink Residents Group, with more than 6,000 residents that signed this petition, and the consistent advocacy from this council. This push has led to real change. I welcome the state's first step in strengthening legislation to compel organic composters to enclose their facilities. It is the responsibility of the waste industry not to create environmental harm. And these proposed changes come as response to a mayoral minute supported by council back in October 23, calling the Queensland Government to expedite the introduction of legislation to compel waste operators to enclose their composting of organic waste if it's near residential area. I've personally spoken with the environment minister, the health minister and the chief health officer face to face on many occasions, and understand that there is a genuine intent to address the noxious waste odour issues that have plagued our city for years. I'm hopeful that this consultation will lead to real change for Ipswich residents, and certainly our council has submitted, put a submission in to that consultation. I'm mindful that we are at the beginning of this process and still have a way to go before results on any action on the ground. It's been a long and hard fought journey by council and our community to get to this point. I continue to encourage residents to lodge their odour complaints with the state's Odour Abatement Task Force as you experience them, and, and as the state government goes through their process of amending legislation. I'll open up for other comment.
I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We go on to item eight, and it's presentations and deputations. We have, I guess, two lots this morning. The first one is our congratulations to our teams here, who are being recognised as a Queensland Disaster Resilience Champion. I'd like to acknowledge four Ipswich City Council representatives that took part in the LGAQ Council to Council Support Programme that worked with other councils during their time of need. Four officers have been recognised as Queensland Disaster Resilience Champions, Kelly Birchman and Annabelle Johnston, answered neighbouring councils' calls for support during the southeast Queensland severe thunderstorms and floods last year. They spent time away from their families during the holiday season to lend a hand to communities in the scenic rim. They spent their time in the evacuation centre, using the knowledge and experience they gained from helping the Ipswich community through our own rain and flooding events. Thank you, Annabelle and Kelly, from a grateful council and community. Also to Matthew Pinder and Chrissie McKenna, are the council team that spearhead Ipswich's response and recovery during disaster. These are two of our best, and their invaluable experience and contribution in providing immediate operational support to Cairns during and after tropical cyclone Jasper cannot be understated. Douglas Shire was impacted with major flooding, landslips, overnight evacuations, homes destroyed, water infrastructure destroyed and roads collapsing. These officers put up their hands right off the back of our very own busy, busy year, and their assistant helped to enable efficient recovery efforts for the community of Cairns and the surrounds. But and Chrissie also assisted the Gold Coast, where they helped out after a severe weather, weather event. At the end of last year, we saw more than 2,200 homes assessed for damage following storms. These exemplary staff members not only provided immediate operational support to the impacted councils, but also assisted in building capacity across the state by sharing their expertise in response and recovery practices. They've also come back with their own insights from how other local government areas operate, which gives Ipswich City Council a more diverse workforce that can then implement the best ideas so we may continue to improve our own disaster response and recovery. I'd also like to make special mention to council's community services manager, Melissa Dower. Melissa also travelled to the Douglas Shire Council to help out in the aftermath of Cyclone Jasper with a human and social recovery. Melissa drafted their community recovery plan and assisted in connecting the community recovery needs with key stakeholders. I'd like to mention of council officers also provided support in evacuation centres in the Western Downs Regional Council area during the bushfires in October last year. Tania Appleton, Joanne Lofgren, Sarah Smith and Madison Watson, attended after residents were called in to evacuate the towns of Tarro, Cogun and the surrounding areas. Sadly, two people lost their lives and about 280 residents were sheltered at the evacuation centres in Dolby and Chinchilla. And I want to thank those officers that went to assist. The LGAQ facilitates the council to council programme, liaises with councils to send help where it's needed. It's a wonderful programme and one that will continue to support, that we will continue to support in our efforts of instilling a culture of good governance, that empowers our teams to bring best, best practice methods back to Ipswich, as well as a share of our own vast experience to other communities in need. And I'm not sure if I give this to you, CEO, or the, of the council officers permitted to come up to receive it.
They're permitted if, if.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Whatever you'd like, Chair.
I'm not sure how shy they are.
They'd be very proud.
Councillor Nellie, as the Chair of the LMD, would you like to assist in these ones? This one is for Innovator of the Year 2024, Ipswich City Council. Ipswich City Council has been named Innovator of the Year at the inaugural 2024 Small Business Friendly Awards. Small business at the heart and soul of our community, and we are committed to supporting them with innovative ideas and future opportunities. This Queensland Small Business Commissioners Office Award awarded council for demonstrated excellence in the Small Business Friendly Programme and for the most innovative initiative that delivered significant enhancements to the operating environment for small businesses. Ipswich City Council won this award for the Ipswich Central Revitalisation Project. Ipswich City Council embarked on an innovative placemaking programme, fostering a shared vision for Ipswich Central, the vibrant cultural hub and beating heart of the Ipswich community. As part of the project, creating places for people, a 12-month street patio trial was initiated across four locations in Ipswich Central for three months. The primary aim was to bolster small businesses and stimulate foot traffic. The trial's feedback was very positive, with 90% of the business community supporting more such initiatives. A significant outcome of the trial is the increased participation of the businesses that typically would not operate on Sundays, allowing the opportunity to capitalise on the increased foot traffic. Council also ran a parking day trial over three days. They converted six car parks into public spaces where the community could enjoy outdoor dining, music and art. As council continues to invest in creating a city heart Ipswich residents can be proud of, we're also creating a special, a great place for business to prosper and for the community to create memorable moments. And I just want to thank councillor Doyle, as the Chair of that committee previously and, and, and leading that initiative. Thank you very much for, for doing that as well. I think I'll just give this one to you. There's a, a beautiful, elegant trophy, very whitey trophy, yes, good paper. And also an amazing certificate.
Mayor, if you, if you would indulge me as the Chair, just a quick note to acknowledge that this was a multi-staff member effort across multiple departments and teams. So credit to the team and thank you to the council for their support for the initiative. Thank you very much.
We now move on to item nine, public participation. There is none. Item 10, matters of public interest. And there are nil. Up to 11, it's got declarations of interest on matters on the agenda. At this stage I have nil, but I open it up for any declarations of interest.
Ah, yes, Mayor. Is there an order? Okay. I would like to, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I wish to inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest. This is a general conflict of interest in nature. The nature of that declarable conflict of interest is that I have a real estate licence. that enables me to act as a salesperson in the real estate industry. It is limited, however, by the fact that I have to be attached to an agency, which I am not presently. Therefore, I gain no financial benefit from such certificate. So I ask that the councillors determine if I can continue to participate in decision processes involving, that may involve matters to do with real estate.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Can I just ask, does that particular declarable conflict of interest bring a personal or financial benefit to you on any matters that we're deciding today?
Certainly nothing today and as I'm not attached to any agency, I don't perceive there to be any whilst that situation continues.
Thank you, councillor. I'll have other questions. Yes, councillor Augustine?
Thank you through the Chair. Councillor Antonelli, you say you've got a certificate. Is it a certificate and a licence?
Under the Act, the certificate is the licence to act as a real estate salesperson only.
So you get a certificate, but you still have to pay a fee and be, have a licence for a particular time? When does your licence actually expire?
The licence is up for renewal. Sorry, the certificate is up for renewal in March of next year. The certificate is the licence. If, so under the Act, it's called a certificate. It's not a licence. It's not, it's not referred to as a licence. But for the, for the benefit of, I guess, clarity, it acts as a licence to, to be a salesperson.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify when it actually expires.
Thank you. Any other questions? No, that I move that councillor Antonelli participates in votes on items on the agenda today in regards to this particular declarable conflict of interest, because there is no personal financial benefit to him. And therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion? I'll put the votes to vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous and carried, noting that councillor Antonelli abstained from the vote. Thank you very much. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Yes, I have further declarations, Mayor. Also, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in an item before the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee, item five. The nature of that declarable conflict of interest is that the matter relates to, and sorry, I didn't, I haven't written the exact note down, but passed donor to a past campaign outside the legislated declaration period may be associated with that report. And therefore, I, I ask the councillors to determine whether I can continue to participate in the decision process.
Thank you very much. Would this be the same declaration as last month?
It is the same declaration that I made last month. It's the same declaration I made in the committee.
I won't ask the same questions then, thank you. Any other questions for councillor Antonelli on that? Councillor, do you have any personal or financial benefit to that particular matter? Item five, which is the Planning Environment Court Action Report?
Say, ask the question again, sorry.
So do you have a personal financial benefit to item five, which is the Planning Environment Court Action?
No, none at all.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll move that councillor Antonelli participates and votes on item five in the report from the Infrastructure Planning Assets Committee, which is actually item five point, 15.1 on our ordinary council meeting, because there is no personal financial benefit to him. And therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put the votes to the vote. Those in favour, it's unanimous in the room, noting that councillor Antonelli has abstained. Thank you. Are there any other conflicts of interest?
Yes, Mayor, again, in accordance with the relevant Act, I inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in an item one as part of the Environment Sustainability Committee that appears today. The nature of that declarable conflict of interest is that, again, the same scenario, but a different situation, is that a past donor to a election campaign outside of the legislated declarable period. And as I declared in the committee at the time, I invite the councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process.
The matter?
None.
Any other questions of councillor Antonelli? Yes, please.
Part of what the committee's discussed, and I'm aware that the council has to itself resolve again on these matters, was it not that these were receiving note reports, this item and the prior item? Yeah, just clarifying that my memory is correct. So, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you very much. In that case, I will move that councillor Antonelli participate votes in item 15.5, item two, which is the amendment of the FOGO2 GO and associated expansion of GO collection services, because there's no personal or financial benefit to him. And therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion? I'll put the votes to vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous, noting that councillor Antonelli has abstained. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, again, in relation to the Finance and Governance Committee, item eight, the matter before the meeting, I declare that I have, I may have a declarable conflict of interest in that item, item eight, in that my daughter's partner, the father of my grandchild, is engaged for employment with the principal contractor. Whilst the principal contractor is not mentioned in the report, obviously, the matter will have some relevance. So I invite other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli. And I note at the committee meeting, you left the room to get further information. So I was just checking that you received the further information that you were seeking?
Yes, I was unaware whether he was a subcontractor to another contractor that was working with the principal contractor. However, he is actually engaged by the principal contractor.
Okay. Is he part of the tendering team?
No, not at all. And he is not a financial independent.
Thank you.
Financial, sorry, financial dependent, I should say.
On yourself?
Yeah.
Do you have a personal financial benefit?
None whatsoever.
To this particular item with the tender consideration plan? Okay, so I'll move that councillor Antonelli participates and votes on item. Yeah, I'll just check what it is. Item 15.2 of the Finance and Governance Committee, item eight, which is the Nicola Street Precinct Tender Consideration Plan, because there's no personal or financial benefit to him and therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Okay, thank you, councillor Madden. Any discussion? Put the votes to vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, noting that councillor Antonelli has abstained. Thank you. Any other declarations?
Yes, one, final one, Mayor.
That's all good.
I, again, in accordance with the relevant section of the relevant Act, I inform the meeting that I may have a declarable conflict of interest in item one of the Special Economic Cultural Development Committee meeting. The nature of that interest, I, I guess, if I were to properly disclose that at this point in time, the matter relating to a confidential report within that report. So I, I ask the discretion of the Chair, you Mayor, as to whether or not the meeting should be closed for the formal declaration of that potential conflict.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Antonelli. Just that this came to us just this morning and normally all, everything to do with a conflict of interest will be declared. But in order for councillor Antonelli to disclose the conflict of interest, he actually has to name the potential tenant, which means it would breach that. So in order for him to...
Excuse me, Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, please.
As the committee, the special meeting of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee did properly hear the full details of that potential declarable conflict of interest and determined that councillor Antonelli could stay and participate in the discussion and voting, you could simply note and rest on that if you were comfortable to do so.
I will just check with, probably more to do with the councillors, that weren't in that particular thing. I'll just ask six of the candidates from you, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not in a position to vote on that matter because I'm not aware of that or what the consideration of the committee was.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. Based on that, I'll move into closed session so that councillor Antonelli can do a full disclosure and then we'd come back out to vote on that. So I move in accordance with section 245 J3G, we move to closed session for negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. So we can discuss, we'll be able to discuss item 15.6 when it comes to this committee. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I move that to the vote. Those in favour? And I note that everyone has voted to go into closed session. Harrison, can we know we're in closed session? Thank you so much. It's 10.05 and welcome back to the ordinary council meeting for the 20th of June. We were just in closed session to discuss a conflict of interest, a declarable conflict of interest from councillor Antonelli for item 15.6. We went into closed session, which is very unusual for a declarable conflict of interest, because in order for councillor Antonelli to fully disclose that conflict of interest, he has to name the potential tenant. So I can confirm that in the closed session, he disclosed in full what he thought was a declarable conflict and we discussed it. And now we're coming into open session and we'll make a vote on that. So I move that councillor Antonelli can remain and participate and vote on item 15.6 because there is no personal or financial benefit to him. And therefore, a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you. Everyone's raised their hand and I note that you were abstaining, councillor Antonelli. Thank you very much.
Sorry, correct.
It's all good. Any other declarations of interest? No. Can I just say thank you to councillor Antonelli for the declaration of interest?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Honorary Councilman for the 20th of June, it's ten thirty-eight. We're up to twelve point one, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Honorary Council meeting. So I'll move that the minutes of the Honorary Council meeting held on the twenty-third of May, twenty twenty-four be confirmed. Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Tenelli. Any corrections, errors, omissions? No, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item thirteen, merrill minute, there is none. Item fourteen, business outstanding, there is none. Sorry, item fifteen, reception consideration committee report. So we'll go to item fifteen point one. And that is the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee of the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four. What I'd normally do, councillor Tenelli, is that I'll sort of refer to you as the chair, to see if you wish to move. So how would you like that managed? Would you like it to be managed to put through as a batch? Or are there other, and sort of highlight things, or did you wish to discuss items?
Well, unless there's any other suggestions from around the table, I'll move. The Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number twenty twenty-four zero one of the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four, be received and adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll open up for discussion, councillor Tully.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'd just speak to item two, if I may. The overwater structures, the proposed removal of the overwater structures at Riverheart. Finally, we can openly discuss Riverheart Parklands, and particularly the way forward in relation to this much-loved area. When Riverheart Parklands was constructed in two thousand and seven, the focus was not only on flood resilience, but also giving the community the opportunity to get to know, appreciate and respect their river. Indeed, hundreds of, a hundred years of walkways every day at Riverheart Parklands through both stage one and two. Prior to construction, there had not been any significant flood events for nearly thirty years. However, since its installation, there has been numerous. And whilst it was initially expected to have a fifty-year life, these events have tested the longevity of some of the structures. Not to mention the now specialist contractors and licences that are needed to repair some of these structures after each flood. It makes it difficult to undertake future works. The structures do stretch over water, and a number of the structures do stretch over water. However, there has always been limited usership of the structures, these particular structures. Therefore, their removal will allow us to concentrate on the remainder of the parkland to preserve its beauty and still allow Ipswich residents to enjoy their river again.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, mayor. And I would just like to add to councillor Antonelli's comments, which I agree with. You know, we've, we have been able to determine, obviously through our Safe City cameras, about low use each of the barbecue facilities and the overwater pontoons. Whilst they were very popular many years ago, for a variety of reasons, they're not really used. And, and we can absolutely see that from our Safe City cameras. What we do see is lots of people walking along the river each day, using the concrete paths. And so that will have to remain as a key feature in my mind for when we talk about what the, the future of the, the Riverheart Parklands look like. It must incorporate walking paths very close to the water's edge to remain, to continue that connection with the river for our residents. And yeah, I, I see this as an opportunity. I always like to see the silver lining. And obviously, this is going to take some years of planning and we'll need to, you know, secure potentially funding. But, you know, we can redevelop the, the parklands and I'd love to see an extension of the boardwalk that currently, you know, exists along River Road there towards Bell Street, perhaps a boardwalk at road level is more appropriate. Yeah, lots of opportunities. Certainly that connection between the Nicholas Street precinct and, and Riverheart, we know that needs work. And equally, there's the connection, a pedestrian footbridge from the riverwalk there across to North Ipswich Reserve. So lots of opportunities and we can make the space really amazing. But yeah, it will require community consultation, planning and, and funding. Thank you.
Thank you. I can remember when this was first built, I think we just had Rivellink open and, and this. And there was a real embracing of our, our river, a lot of excitement. And Riverheart Parkland is, is very much loved. And I also note that when it was built, the, the previous flood was in, what, nineteen seventy-four? So between now and then, we've had seven floods. And each time, those overwater structures cost over a million dollars and the current bill is over two million dollars at the moment. And that's with us going to the market a few times and getting no responses. It's been something that's been very challenging because we really wanted to get that parkland back up to speed. Look, the, it's, the overwater structures are seriously degraded. They've been plagued by floods since they opened. The community has told us loud and clear over the last four years that they don't want council wasting their money fixing assets that will flood again and again. I think it's important to note that this is the first step for Riverheart Parklands. Will we come into the community for a better understanding of how we use the parklands, engage their thoughts in the future? As councillor Doyle said, we know the walkway is very well used from the Safe City cameras, but we know that the overwater structures, not, not so much. We have taken time and that's probably because, so it is because we have engaged a number of professionals to look at how we could possibly keep those water structures, overwater structures, and make them flood-proof. And there's just not a way to do it in a cost-effective manner. So I encourage anyone who's, to, to read the report. I think it goes into quite a bit of detail as to this, this decision that the, the committee made. And really look forward to doing the community consultation on what other wonderful things we can do along the river there. Open for any other further discussion? Yes, councillor Tully.
Thanks, mayor. There's two items I'd like to speak to. Firstly, item three on page eighty-seven, which is the Springfield Central East Scooter Pilot. Now, that, that has been in operation for a year. The recommendation to council is that it be extended for another year with the supplier beam mobility. The, the data in the report is quite illuminating in relation to the period from July twenty twenty-three to March twenty twenty-four, that in that trial, which is based on Springfield Central and Springfield Lakes, total trips made, twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, average trip duration, twelve minutes, average trip distance, two point one kilometres, average of eighty trips per day. And the trial, it says, is showing evidence of recreational usage, travel to and from shops, travel to and from public transport and travel to and from work. So it's reasonably popular and I, I remember when this was set up and councillor Johnic and myself had some concerns about safety issues, the fact that the, the trial area includes the north-south link from near the Springfield Central Railway Station through to the Orion Lagoon. But it's good to note that there's certainly been no recent incidents or no recent complaints of any problems, although anecdotally. although anecdotally, some scooters are still being left by users on footpaths and particularly near traffic lights and where people cross the road. So that is an issue. And I guess in the next twelve months, and in the recommendation, there's a provision for another extension beyond that. But I'd like to get further community feedback. Obviously, I guess from the users, they're pretty happy with that. But the broader community, it seems to be working. And we'll either make a decision about the permanence of the trial in twelve months' time or in two years' time. So I think someone else said recently about cheap rail fares, use it or lose it. So I, I won't repeat that famous expression. The other item I'd just touch on very briefly, and I did at the committee, was item five on page ninety-one, the Planning, Environment, Court Action Status Report. This is a very pleasing report. This is a report on all current outstanding matters before generally the Planning and Environment Court could be, and we had one recently in the High Court of Australia. But that's dropped from about eleven items down to five. And I'd like to place on the public record at the council meeting, thanks to Brett Davy, the general manager and the staff, reducing those number of appeals to a very manageable five is very good. Some of it is still with the appellants to, you know, provide further information. But as a, a large developing city in Queensland, to have only five appeals outstanding before the P and E Court is extremely pleasing. And they're being dealt with generally expeditiously, but, but more importantly, in a way which is fair both to the applicant, the council and the broader community. So thanks to Brett in getting that down and hopefully we can keep that down in the future.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour. Oh, sorry, councillor Tenelli.
I was just going to, um.
A write a reply?
The write a reply, if I may, mayor.
No one spoke against it, but please do.
Yeah, just thank both the councillors for their comments. Councillor Doyle, in relation to the River Heart Parklands. But yeah, just with respect to, I reiterate our thanks to the Planning and Development Team for bringing that number of court matters down. But I guess with respect to the East Scooter Pilot, like them or loathe them. And I know that councillor Doyle's not a great fan of them. People do have concerns about them, but I think they do have potential to increase connectivity and mobility around our city. And in line with what the state government is looking to do with the fifty-cent fares for public transport, it may actually be quite a good time for them to consider the pilot further. But I also encourage members of the community to provide feedback to their local councillors, councillor Tully and Johnic, and also to the provider of that service, just to give us the pros and cons of what they see with respect to those scooters. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. With that, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to fifteen point two, the report of the Finance and Governance Committee of the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four. I'll head over to the chair to see how he'd like this report managed.
Yes, I'll move the report, mayor. I'll move the privacy of the Finance and Governance Committee Report two oh two four oh one be received and the recommendations contained therein be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Just several.
Do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, thank you. Several items that I'll just briefly touch on. Item one, which is the establishment of the membership in terms of reference of the Regulation Advisory Committee. This is a new committee that's been established to look, I think the initial task is for the complete review of our current local laws. The recommendation is that myself be the chair, deputy chair, councillor Madden, members councillor Doyle and councillor Antonelli. The importance of this, especially with the review of our local laws, which was last done perhaps ten or twelve years ago. Times change and the importance of local laws, whether we need all of the provisions of the local laws, whether any have become redundant because of state or, or federal legislation indeed, and whether any additional local laws are required. So that will be one of the first tasks of the advisory committee. The, and I'll just touch on these as a group, there's items two, three to seven. They're procurement items, and I won't go into detail, except to make the comment that those seven items, six items, indicate the, the broad range, or a broad range of activities of, of a local government. The first one is the procurement of Ipswich drainage upgrade at East Ipswich. Next one is parking machines and communication management, procurement for pedestrian people counters. A quote consideration for procurement at the Ipswich Art Gallery, number five. Procurement for regional ecosystem and biocondition assessment training. And procurement for waste transport services. I just make the point that we, all local governments, but some in particularly the bigger city and the bigger regional local councils in Queensland have a wide responsibility. And those recommendations alone indicate the, that wide range and the importance of what local councils now do. The days of roads, rates and rubbish are very important. But they're long gone in, in terms of the importance of other matters, as well as those continuing into the future. The, an allied recommendation is item eight, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct Tender Consideration Plan. That will enable us a, as a council to be able to consider and handle tenders in a more efficient way. It's always very difficult where local government is, is the owner of an enterprise or a shopping centre competing with other private similar enterprises, which don't have the normal restrictions which local governments do. And this tender consideration plan opens up a formal process by which we can quickly and expeditiously consider the tenders as the development of the Nicholas Street precinct continues. Just finally, item ten is a recommendation to increase, increase the membership by one to the, to the committee. And that is that councillor Jim Madden be appointed as a member of the Finance and Governance Committee. Councillor Madden, of course, has had experience on the Somerset Regional Council and in State Parliament. And except for the amalgamation of Ipswich and Morton, I believe that he becomes only the second person in the city's history since eighteen sixty to have served on two councils. The other one was Norm Kruger, who was a councillor of the Pine River Shire and an alderman of the Ipswich City Council. So congratulations, Jim, as, as long as we've got the numbers to get this motion through today.
I see we have three lawyers and a copper. We wouldn't say heads. What do you want to speak to, to this item? No? In that case, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point three, the report of the Community and Sport Committee of the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how we'd like this report managed. Happy to move it? Thank you very much. Do we have a second after that report? Thank you, councillor Augustine. Thank you. Would you like to speak to it?
We had one item at the committee meeting last week and I just recommend it to the council for adoption.
Thank you. Yeah, that item was the Ipswich Community Recovery and Resilience Officer Programme. And I note that that programme has been, I think, just amazing for our community. It has played an important role in bringing local government, the community and stakeholders together to achieve improved community resilience and recovery from disasters. After a hundred and seventy meetings, workshops, events and programmes, this has, has had a very positive impact on our community. We've now formed the Ipswich Resilience Network, so we can continue that. It's set up really well. Established four community early response teams, one in each division. And I'd like to thank the Australian and Queensland governments who funded this programme completely. And I think, thank everyone who has supported that programme as well. I'd like to run for further discussion. Now, the discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to fifteen point four, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee, the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four. I'll hand over to the chair to see how she would like this report managed.
The five items, I'd like to just move them.
As a batch?
As a batch, yeah.
Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Cullen. Any discussion? You like to highlight anything?
Oh, yes, I would like to, thank you, Chair. I'd like to highlight the spark event that's going to happen, that's going to start on the fourth of July. It's the fourth iteration of the city's premier arts and culture, culture festival. It's going to be bigger and better and it starts on the fourth of July. The, the, the city will reverberate to the music and joy of, this festival will bring to Ipswich from the performances that will be on show. The festival brings so much energy and verve to the city. It's one of the highlights of the year. So I'm very much looking forward to going to many of these events. I must say I'm getting more artsy, getting around to all the different events that are happening around the place. And I, and I must truly commend our staff that put on these events. It's just such a spectacular, when you go out and you see everything that they put on and just the energy that they even bring to these events, they just must, they should be just commended, commended on it, on them. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Open for other discussion? Thank you, councillor Tully.
Yeah, just briefly on that, that item, just to make a, a, a comment that I think councillor Cullen, I think he indicated that he was very happy to see the teddy bears coming up, so.
I hope this not going to lead to a complaint.
I might, might see you there. Item five, which is the Advocacy Advisory Committee, Terms of Reb, uh, Terms of Reference and Membership. I wish to move an amendment that under members to include the move that councillor Jim Madden be included as a member of that committee.
So before we do that, I'll have to make sure we don't deal with this in batch? You wanting to amend a, a recommendation of the committee?
No, I, I think that's in order because that just becomes an amendment to the entire report that'd be received and approved subject to that amendment.
I appreciate that, but I think because you're amending or changing a decision, I think we'd have to look at reports. I'd have to speak to the mover and the, the seconder.
A point of order, ma'am, just for clarity, you said decision, they're just recommendations. The council makes the decision today on those items.
Yes, I appreciate that, thank you. But as, as the chair of this, I'd just like to be very upfront. If we're making amendments, I'd like to have that removed and if we're going to move something as a batch. So, so we're looking at item one, two, three, four together and then deal with item five separately because it was an amendment. Is that what I'm hearing from you, councillor Tully?
Well, that's another way of dealing with it, yes.
Yes. I just want to check with the mover and the seconder. If you're happy to amend your recommendation to move all the items in batch and instead move items one through to four?
So sorry, ma'am, can you just clarify that again? We're moving.
So at the moment, the active motion is to move the entire report as is. And we're just speaking to it. Councillor Tully has put forward an, an amendment to include councillor Madden to the Advocacy Advisory Committee. So I'm looking at removing that. So we vote on items one through to four in a batch and then we'll discuss item five.
Okay.
You're okay with that?
Right, thank you.
Can I just check with the chair? So we'll move that. So the amendment, the motion is that we're looking at items one through to four? Thank you. And then we'll do five separately. Thank you. Any other discussion on items one through to four? No, I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. We're now looking at item five of fifteen point four of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee. So I think you're, as the chair, I don't know if you wish to move item five and I think the. No? Okay.
I'll, I'll move, I'll move the adoption of item five, subject to the inclusion under members of councillor Madden.
So you want to put that forward. Do I have a, first of all, because it's the motion in the, in the, in the report, can I have a second to the current motion? And then obviously we can discuss the amendment once it's seconded. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Tully. Okay, now, now councillor Tully? Sorry?
Yeah. Point of order, it hasn't been moved. It's been moved with an amendment. So if you're not going to.
So tha- thank you very much. I'm the chair. I'm going to follow this procedure that I have for the last four years according to our meeting procedures. We want to have a discussion on an amendment that's currently in there. I've had the chair not say that they, has not moved it. So I just want to do it in proper governance. So I note that councillor Tully, as I understand, that you moved that recommendation, now you do want to do amendment. And councillor Cullen has seconded that. I now open up if you wish to move an amendment.
Well, I'm happy to proceed with that, but the motion I moved was not an amendment, but was an inclusion in the motion that I moved. But I will now move as an amendment that the, that councillor Madden.
Thank you.
Be included as a member of the committee.
Okay, thank you. I'll check with the seconder of this. Councillor, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up for discussion. I guess I'll just ask councillor Madden if you're happy to, to take that role on.
I was about to say that, mayor. I'm happy to take that role on as a, as a member of the Advocacy Advisory Committee for the Economic and Cultural Development Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. And obviously your experience in the state will be hopefully helpful. Any other discussion?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I just, I just want to put it on record that this is the fir-, as the chair, that was the first I've heard of. That's why I was taken aback of somebody coming on to an advocacy group that I am the chair and know nothing about. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
I'll go say I'm, I'm the chair of this Advocacy Advisory Committee and no one let me know beforehand either. And I guess in going forward, it'd be good if there was better communication. So I don't have any objections, but it would be.
Point of order, ma'am, you're yet to be appointed as the chair of the committee. That's what we're voting on now. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm just getting very confused right now.
Thank you. As the person that's been recommended to be the chair of that committee, I'd just say it would have been nice to be given a heads-up. I don't have any issues with it, but it just would have been nice. I think obviously the chairs of that committee would be saying the same. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote.
Just in response.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Yeah, that, that is correct, that there are no members of that committee at the moment. But I, I thought it might provide a good balance with, you know, that additional member and that's why I proposed that.
Thank you. I'll take that as your write a reply. We'll move to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're now move on to fifteen point five, the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the eleventh of June, twenty twenty-four. I'll hand over to the chair of that, if I could highlight that. I noted the last committee, there was discussion about item six, the SES Local Control Honorarium payments. I don't know if you wish to discuss that separately. Councillor Madden also, I'd like to discuss item five on the LDMG policy separately as well, so.
Perhaps, mayor, I'll move as a block that we accept, that the council receive the report and accept the recommendations detailed in the report by the Environment and Sustainability Committee number two thousand and twenty-four zero one of the eleventh of June, two thousand and twenty-four. Four items. Two, three, four and seven? Is that the right, correct?
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm, I'm happy just to speak to item five. I just thought I'd highlight that. So I'm happy for it to be as part of the batch.
Okay, so do the whole lot as a batch?
But I wasn't sure with item six because it was a matter that did come up during the committee.
I don't recall.
The honorarium for the SES? Still some questions?
Perhaps, mayor, I'll just correct, correct the motion.
Okay.
Yep. I'll correct the motion and I'm happy.
I'll let you manage.
And I'm happy to amend the motion if I have to amend the motion. The motion is that the council rece- receive the report and adopt the recommendations detailed in the report by the Environment and Sustainability Committee number two thousand and twenty-four zero one of the eleventh of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second after that? Thank you, councillor Tenelli. Do you wish to speak to or highlight things?
Yes, and not so much highlight, ma'am, but I'd like to thank the committee members and the council officers. Uh, yes, and uh, not so much highlight, ma'am, but I'd like to thank the committee members and the council officers for their contribution to the preparation of the report, and I invite my fellow council members to make any comments or amendments that they may wish to make.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair, uh, I would like to um suggest an amendment to, I believe it's uh item five, just the wording of there's no uh change to the um intent, but just a, a more clearer word, wording going forward. Uh, I actually don't have that wording on me at the moment for some reason, but um it was circulated, so I understand you have it uh there.
So you're talking about item, item five?
Item five.
I, no, I don't.
I thought it was actually being presented, the way it was uh shown to me on, in the email, was that it was going to be presented as an amendment.
I haven't been told of any amendment.
If you just go to um item five, please, sorry, through you, chair. Um, oh, okay. Actually wanting the SES uh honorarium.
That's item six.
Matter, yep.
So can I just check, are you looking at the SES honorarium or the?
Correct, the SES honorarium, it's a change.
May I, may I see what the amendment is? Because I just want to see if we have to deal with it separately.
I can speak to that.
Yep.
Mayor, through you, chair, the discussion at the committee was uh questioning the duration, as you recall, of the, of the payment. So the advice from the organisation through myself is to delete the word ongoing from the end of that sentence and to insert the word annual in front of honorarium. So that council pay the Ipswich City SES Unit Local Controller an annual honorarium. So then deleting of thirty five thousand per year ongoing. And the advice was that the annual amount and how it is calculated can then be clarified in the support SES policy which will be due for review in September of this year, if that's acceptable.
I'm happy as the chair because it's a, a minor.
Yes.
Very, very minor, uh, and it was raised at the last one. Uh, I'll just double check with the.
I'm not sure is that.
Yes, I'm very happy to adopt that approach, ma'am.
And you're the seconder obviously councillor Tully, so you're obviously in support of that amendment.
I'm satisfied with that.
Okay, so just so everyone's aware of what that slightly amended recommendation was from that committee. I have it for discussion.
Or just further, um, uh, are we, we're not, do we need to speak to that amendment any further or are we speaking to the report in general?
The reporting in general, the.
Okay, thank you. Um, ma'am, I'd just speak to uh item three, which is the matter in relation to the red imported fire ants. Um, this is uh of great concern to many residents, the fact that there seems to be an ever-growing presence of this uh imported pest, and I think that the um, the state's desire to devolve this down to us is uh the thin edge of the wedge towards a fend-for-yourself approach. The council should have a role and a partnership role in attending to our own facilities and, and parks and the like that we own. But uh to have no support, resources or money for what is a national and state priority is quite frustrating. And uh I see that the, the state has not provided us, or the, or the national government has not provided us with any uh, anything of the sort to assist with this ongoing problem. Uh, and I believe that next will be the state requiring property owners themselves to address and fund um programs to eradicate it from their own properties, and this will ultimately, I believe, lead to a full-blown infestation across our state and particularly southeast Queensland. Uh, the state and the feds have only ever committed sufficient funds, I believe, to manage despite the fact that they've been saying that they were working towards eradication. They've only really ever gone far enough to manage it to a certain point, and now they seem to have walked away from it and left it with us. And ultimately, I believe, we'll leave it to the residents themselves and property owners to deal with this problem themselves. If you look at other countries that are infested with this imported fire ant, um particularly places like the United States, um, owners can't even use their own backyard, and if they ever have a party, they've got to bring in a uh pest uh terminator to come in and treat their property so they can have a birthday party with their own children. I'd hate to think that this is the future that we will come to witness ourselves if um, if we're going to be left with this problem with no support. Now, I think that as a council, we will be responsible, we will do our best to eradicate it from our own, our own properties and the like. But if the state is going to continue to go down this path of devolving it down to, um I believe it will ultimately be with the property owners themselves, then this is going to be a future we're going to have to come to terms with. Thank you.
Thank you, um councillor Tully. I note that when we had the committee, we did discuss whether they wanted to put in a recommendation B to perhaps write to the state about that, I guess I'm looking to the chair and the deputy chair of that committee if you'd like to.
Yes, sir, yes, there was discussion of that and I'd very much uh like that to happen, and if I have to move an amendment, I will.
I've, I've got something that may, may, may suffice, um, that the council write a letter to the minister for agricultural industry development and fisheries. Minister for Agricultural Industry Development and Fisheries. It, it, develop, agricultural industry development, sorry. And Fisheries. And Minister for Rural, Rural Communities. Mark Furner MP. Outlining that Ipswich City Council believes the success of the program does need a coordinated approach. And that cost shifting to council and the community without appropriate consultation is not acceptable. I'm happy to, if you want to, I know there were some strong words during the committee, I'm, I'm happy, I'm open to any other suggestions who will alter that. Before I go to the mover and the seconder.
I would, I would like to end that motion with an impost on ratepayers.
Appropriate consultation is not acceptable. And with a significant impost to ratepayers. Impost to ratepayers.
Mayor, I'm happy to either move that or second that motion.
I'm just going around, I'm getting, are you okay?
Just want to clarify, so tha- that's the main, you, you're not excluding that item as you did on the previous report to be considered separately.
I've been thinking on the fly since you've done that, and I was thinking, yeah, what you were suggesting was probably a better way, so.
Can I just, I, I, I don't like to hark on the past, but that was quite a normal way to, the principal motion, adopt all, subject to X, Y and Z. So it's clear, it's on the, it's, 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 it's on the agenda, so I think that's a very efficient way of doing it.
Sorry, I had, I guess I had it set in my mind we're going to go to a certain way like we, we normally do, but yeah, I, I can see as, as we were going on that, yeah, it could be more efficient this way. So thank you. I think I'll note in that particular motion, there'll be some capitalisation like M for Minister, A for Agriculture and stuff like that. Is, so the move and the second is okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And can I make sure that council's a capital C, please, council, yep. Thank you. Um, and speaking of that, like you said, over the last twenty years, state and federal governments have jointly funded treatment surveillance programs through the National Red Imported Fire Anti-Eradication Program. And it's been estimated a cost of nearly six hundred million dollars. Um, and disappointingly, it hasn't stopped it. Uh, so it's very disappointing now that they've not been successful and they're withdrawing their support for, for Ipswich, Brisbane, Logan, Gold Coast, Moreton Bay, Sydney Rim and Redland local government areas. And it's not just council, it's private landowners as well, who will now have to pick up the costs associated controlling with these fire ants, so yeah, really clear, it's not just uh council, it's all landowners will have that responsibility. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am, I'd like to speak on that item uh as well, and um I, councils would be aware of a survey that the Local Government Association conducted last year about cost shifting in local government that um, it, there were seventy five percent of the seventy seven councils in Queensland responded to that, which shows that the cost shifting from state and federal to local government uh at the moment is costing local government about three hundred and sixty million dollars a year uh alone in Queensland, and this is a process of, of over some twenty years and bit by bit, uh the cost is being shifted from the state government in particular, but from the federal government as well uh to local government, the seventy seven councils in Queensland, and this is another classic example of um, of this um uh decision now which will put uh an immense burden on, particularly on some uh councils mainly in um southeast Queensland. I recall when fire ants were first found simultaneously in February two thousand and one at the Laguna Nursery in Progress Road at Weycol and at the Port of Brisbane. Um, the state government moved fairly quickly and there were teams going around from house to house that people may recall. Uh, then there was a significant state and federal funding uh for this. I said at the time that they'll, they'll never stop the firing. Um, i- if we look at the importation of uh rabbits, uh foxes, cane toads, whatever, pests, once they're into Australia, they, uh, there, there's been no real record of, of them being stopped. But this cost shifting is, is significant. Um, I'm not sure if we've briefly mentioned this before, but this is a possibility because this is going to be ongoing, the, of, of raising this matter at the uh, as a motion for the local government conference uh in October. If uh that can be recorded, uh please, uh through you, ma'am, to the CEO, uh as an item um appropriately drafted, uh rather than the exact wording here. I think writing to the minister is important, but people need to know that where it's a, a state and national responsibility, which it is um with, with the imported uh fire ants, um that's where the uh responsibility should lie with the state and federal governments, not putting burden after burden onto uh local councillors, uh local councils, uh as has happened uh in the last twenty years where the seventy seven councils in Queensland, um, uh, and, and it's the ratepayers of the seventy seven councils in Queensland are three hundred and sixty million dollars worse off per year. The only other um uh matter I'd like to briefly mention is the uh amendment to FOGO, which is now becoming GO. Um, I'm not sure that the um traction of the name from FOGO to GO that people would understand what GO is. Um, like a stop and go thing, but it, it shows the changing dynamics of recycling and uh rubbish collection that we're, we're we're in a position to make a, a varied decision, and I, I think what we endeavored to do was to, you know, lead i- in relation to this. This is an opportunity, of course, um to vary the um how, how we're dealing with it for the twenty twenty five, twenty six financial year. There's an opportunity, a good opportunity to know that this is, this is a, a moving feast, the changing dynamics of that of what we're planning to do and to um work with the state government and other local councils so that we have a a common, maybe not identical approach, but certainly a common approach to dealing with wa- with waste in our communities.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
Um, I'd like to speak to item one as well. Um, we've advocated very hard to the state government to legislate for higher standards in the waste industry for those taking in odorous waste. Um, it's a good result for our community that there has been positive movement there, and while this much-needed overhaul of organics processing will hopefully deliver long-term improvements for our residents, the changes to the environmental standards for composting will make the processing of food waste significantly more expensive as the market adapts. Uh, the market simply has not caught up with basically legislation and the need. Council simply cannot sustain a four-fold increase in the cost of processing it, uh its waste, should we proceed with the full FOGO at this stage. Uh, this proposed pause is a way the council can continue a more affordable bin service that is not contributing to odorous material ending up at composters um at Swan Bank. And speaking to number five, the proposed disaster management policy and the local disaster management plan. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the council's emergency management unit and the Ipswich's local disaster management group members for the important work that they do, and I welcome the changes proposed in this report. While there's always room for improvement, the Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group's response to the twenty twenty hailstorm and twenty twenty two floods have been widely praised by our community and the state agencies who work closely within times of disaster. More importantly, we had no loss of life and we kept our community safe. The Queensland Inspector General Emergency Management for southeast Queensland's, um, in his review, the southeast Queensland rainfall and flooding February to March twenty twenty two review praised the response from the Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group. In particular, the Ipswich LDMG was showcased its initiative in proactively using the Australian Warning System during the event. Ours was the first LDMG in Queensland to do this, and as a result of its success, the Inspector General Emergency Management recommended this system be rolled out across Queensland by November twenty twenty three. Inspector General Emergency Management also individually praised the Ipswich LDMG on the information flow to elected representatives during the flood. Importantly, we initiated an independent review into council's flood response so it could continue to improve how we respond to disasters and be better prepared for what our ci- city may face in the future. This policy has a unique feature in regards to communications with all elected representatives. During the twenty twenty two flood, I made the decision as the chair of the LDMG to share all reports I received from the LDMG with all state and federal MPs and the councillors. These reports contain confidential information that is timely and inaccurate and not to be shared outside the LDMG. However, it's my opinion that all the elected representatives were in a need-to-know position and that for them to support our community, they should have the same information as me. I shared these reports openly and transparently with all elected representatives, and I'm pleased that this policy has maintained the changes that we made to the policy in the last term. I'd also like to commend the Ipswich Local Disaster Management Group on the number of national and state awards received over the last four years. And those six uh national and state awards are in twenty twenty, Ipswich City Council received a resilience Australia award in the Emergency Management Animation Series where they were the winner. In twenty twenty, the SES received the Assistant Commissioner's Shield for Operational Response of the Year, uh southeast Queensland Halloween Hailstorm. In twenty twenty two, the Ipswich City Council received an award from the Flood Plane Management Australia, an excellence award for highly commended on the flood risk management project of the year. Also in twenty twenty two, Ipswich City Council received a national award for, national awards for local government in disaster preparedness forewarned as forearmed on the Ipswich Integrated Catchment Plan. In twenty twenty three, Ipswich City Council received a Local Government Managers Association Award for Excellence where they are a finalist for the twenty twenty two flood response and recovery. And just last year, in twenty twenty three, the SES received the Assistant Commissioner's Shield for Operational Response of the Year in the missing person search at Springfield. Therefore, it's my intention to support this report today and I again thank our emergency management unit and the Ipswich LDMG for their ongoing efforts to keep our city safe. I'll open it up for further discussion.
Okay, so I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We're now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the report of the Special Economic and Cultural Development Committee that was just held this morning at eight fifteen. Um, so it's now coming to, it's, it's been a recommendation for those to leases to proceed, so now it's for this council to consider and, and make that decision. Um, I'm going to assume that people want to go into closed session at some stage. Um, so um, I won't move it, I'll just move to go into closed session so we can discuss the commercial aspects. So I move that in accordance with section two, five, four, J, three, G. Um, which is negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interest of the local government. I move that we move into closed session, do I have a second of that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand, it's unanimous, and let us let me know when we're in closed session, Harrison.
Thank you. It's eleven thirty five and we're back in open session for the ordinary council meeting. The item we're looking at now is fifteen point six, which is discussing two potential tenancies in the Nicola Street precinct. Now councillor Augustine, you are the chair of this committee. Would you like to leave this or how would you like these managed? One at a time, I think, or?
Yeah, we can go one at a time.
Thank you. So first one is the Nicola Street precinct, approved for an agreement for lease for tenancy T five and T six in venue. So I'll move A through to E. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. I'll open it up for discussion now.
Thank you, mayor. I have some commentary, but I'm more than happy to let the chair go first, I think.
Oh, no, I was just excited for this, this particular ones to come in to the precinct. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Chair. And I too am really excited, as I always get very excited when we have leases come through and certainly that are, you know, approved or recommended by Knight Frank and stack up during our forbure model. And leasing the spaces has been challenging from the outset when we faced COVID and then we faced supply chain issues and construction issues. Everything was thrown at this. So what has transpired is, I guess, a drawn out slightly protracted timeframe in getting leases in place. So I'm excited to see the spaces garnering support from the market. However, there's a but coming just in relation to T five, T six, the proposed tenancy. And I just want to frame or qualify my comments by saying I do believe it's complimentary and it's obviously recommended by Knight Frank. But when I think about the bigger picture and what we set out to achieve in the precinct, I go back to our strategic outcomes that were defined, that underpin the scheme. It's about food, it's about entertainment, culture and art. So for reasons around that, I'm not going to support this lease today, just in relation to T five, T six. And I'd just like to make the following general comment in that regard. The development within Nicola Street is a catalytic project, which means the benefits from the development are significantly greater than a stricter isolated analysis of the assets alone and their immediate return on investment. A catalytic project defining feature that sets it apart from traditional commercial real estate is known as patient equity, financial equity that has the expectations of returns over a longer period of time. And we can't lose focus of the point of doing all this. It was a catalytic project. It is not an isolated commercial venture. One of the biggest aims of a catalytic project is to improve economic growth, not just within the precinct, but for the wider Ipswich Central and Ipswich. And it's the catalyst to drive outside large scale investment from the private sector. We know where we're waiting for, we're begging for high density residential development. It hasn't arrived yet despite multiple parcels of privately owned land sitting idle in our CBD. So what we need to do is continue with our strategic vision for Nicola Street precinct, which will then open up and make those projects more viable or palatable to external advisers, sorry, external investors. I want to refer to the Ipswich Retail Strategy Update from twenty twenty one, and that was a report from council's external professional advisers. All councillors will have access to that report, but I'm happy to distribute it after this session because I think it's a really important document that everyone should be across, in particular the new council members. So it includes a technical analysis that's underpinned and informed the development of the centre's strategy for the new Ipswich Planning Scheme. It was noted in that that the highest priority for council should be to find a way to improve the fortunes of the Ipswich CBD, given the significant growth expected across Ipswich and in centres, for example, like Springfield Central. With the Ipswich CBD needing to focus more strongly on the non retail anchors of future, for instance, arts and culture. It was noted that further expansion within other city centres like Springfield can impact the hierarchy of the city centres in Ipswich. It further outlines that council's priority will likely be more about encouraging Ipswich CBD to focus on its strengths and growing that rather than taking away from other city centre areas. It includes focusing on the Ipswich CBD civic function as a centre, as a city centre, creating a calendar of events and a network of visitor attractions, both for Ipswich residents and visitors beyond the LGA. And that are proven to be successful in city centres, including sports stadiums, night markets, arts and cultural facilities. The document discusses a number of other strategies in detail. However, I'm uncertain, I think the document might largely be confidential to council. So I'm sort of going gently in discussing the content. But it does set out some of the reasons that led to the demise of the Ipswich CBD. And for that reason, it's really, really important for councillors to get across that when we are looking at making decisions around Nicola Street precinct and approval of leases going forward. And indeed, when we talk about eventually getting to the point whether we divest the assets. I encourage all councillors to read and understand that document to know why Ipswich Central revitalisation was and is necessary, important and somewhat an urgent priority for this council. Our residents, local businesses and property owners within the Ipswich CBD and wider Ipswich Central are counting on council to continue this important work. We did float the idea and, you know, considerable amount of work was done on the concept of the children's gallery. We, our library has been, dedicated children's library has been enormously successful and brings so much visitors to the CBD. So I think it's a no brainer to do the children's gallery. I accept the financial challenges of that, but we are so early in the process that, you know, we haven't even let time go by to consider attracting federal or state government grants towards funding that. Yeah, I'll probably stop there.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open it for other discussion. No other discussion? I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in...
I was going to wait to see whether you spoke, mayor. I was going to give you the opportunity, but look, I'd like to take the opportunity to say that I support everything that councillor Doyle said with respect to the particular tenant that we cannot speak of. I think I said in the committee that I don't believe it to be overly complimentary to what the site needs. However, I do, it might be a poor option, but I see it as the only option. And that's the only option because, and as I've said previously, I've given my views publicly about what that corner could have looked like, considering it is an iconic corner. And I believe that it's been undervalued in that respect and that poor consideration with respect to that particular corner tenancy and what could have happened. There had, there been some deconstruction of the entry of, to the old cinemas, the entry to the old McDonald and East. If that had have been done properly, I think there would have been better options for that corner. But unfortunately, the council of the day took the easy way out in relation to that. And as a result, we've been left with a difficult tenancy to tenant. And it is, when I said the only option, there has been nothing else come forward to go on that site except for what I believe was a desperate and ill conceived idea in relation to a children's art gallery going on that site. I will say that I do support the notion of a children's art gallery. I know the one that we have currently within the Ipswich Art Gallery is very well attended, very well enjoyed by many young people in Ipswich, but I don't believe that is the site for it either. That site is the iconic corner and it could have been activated better. At the moment, even with this particular tenancy, I believe it is not providing adequate connection to the top of town and I don't believe it will provide adequate activation to Brisbane Street. That said, I am somewhat pragmatic and I believe that this is going to be our only option, potentially our best option. And while I am not necessarily keen on accepting second best, it appears that we are painted into this corner, this particular corner, the corner of Allenborough and Brisbane.
Yes, councillor Doyle?
Chair, just like to note the record that councillor Antonelli's comments that the idea of the children's gallery was desperate and ill thought through, I find highly offensive, disrespectful and unprofessional. There were a number of people that worked on this, including individuals within the organisation. So to make comments like that about their work and the due diligence... So to make comments like that about their work and the due diligence that was done, not necessary.
Thank you, uh councillor Doyle, I was going to.
I'm not here for a tip for tap.
Excuse me, he can't.
It appears, it's a point of order.
When the chair is speaking, unless it is a point of order. Um but yeah, I was going to say something similar uh about how you described that. Um I, I thought it was um not as professional as it could be, uh councillor Antonelli. Uh but I am interested, you mentioned for the, well, I heard for the first time this morning at the council meeting about the deconstruction of the entrance. So I hadn't heard you speak of that before, so I don't know what you're actually talking about. Are you able to explain that a little bit more?
Well, that was described to us all. Uh mayor, you were present when we were at the um, when we did the walkthrough, that a decision was made by the council not to adequately deconstruct uh that tenancy in the corner, including the walkway from Brisbane Street to get a better outcome.
Sorry, I don't recall that um being discussed, which part of the, the.
Well, I actually asked the question, is it uh of.
So we spend more money on further construction or we don't spend more money on further construction? I, yeah, I'm a bit confused.
Well, it's not that confusing really because the reality is that by not undertaking particular focus on that corner, an iconic corner, we could have got a better outcome. But the council decided not to spend the money to get that right. And as I said, I have been critical of the council, of the previous council, with respect to that corner and their proposed development. But um when I went, did the walkthrough of the site, I could even see that was a pretty much a bit of a hash up in many respects and they could, that could have been done a lot better. That is an iconic corner and it has, in fact, some of the footprint of that corner won't be utilised because of that decision. And as I said, it could have been a better tenancy, better option, and also we could have got better, um I guess, um interest in that corner if it had have been done better.
So if I just go to, could you actually explain what that deconstruction is? So I, I don't, I'm trying to go visual on that, what, what would change to what it is now?
Well, you've even remarked yourself, mayor, in a previous, in meetings that we've, when we've discussed this, is that, that pedestrian ramp that leads around the front, the old foyer to the cinemas was problematic. You decided to keep it instead of doing something more productive with it.
Could you explain what that more productive thing would be? So I, I don't, I, like I said, I hadn't heard you, heard this mentioned.
Mayor, I'm not an engineer, but I can, but it doesn't take much imagination to realise that something better could have been done with that corner. And what we've been left with is one applicant. Now, we've, we've had, we've had councillor Doyle herself say that this particular tenant, she's not supporting the motion. Now, I agree with her that it is not what is needed, but the reality is we are left with a problematic site. Are we in agreement on that? If we are in agreement on, with that, then the problematic site comes back to the fact that we didn't get it right.
Um Chair, sorry, again, I'm being misquoted here on the floor, okay? So I, I act, I absolutely was very clear when I said I wouldn't be voting in favour of this lease. Um it had nothing to do with it not being complimentary. I believe it is complimentary. But I believe there is a bigger, better solution out there, um and that is the children's art gallery that we've done considerable uh work on. So I don't want to be misquoted. Um if you can't remember what I've said.
Yep.
Don't try and repeat what I've said.
And can I just say overall, the precinct has a lot of history and obviously there's people in this room with different views. Um I, I just hold up the, I guess, the last um design proposal that the previous, previous council, the Swiss council did in two thousand seventeen that was signed off. And that particular corner was to have a restaurant and it's quite clear from the site, no matter what we did, it was never going to be able to have a restaurant. That was discussed in, in closed session. So look, I really don't want to go into who's done what. I think we need to, to move forward, uh otherwise we'll be here going back and forth. I just ask that it's um respectful um in going forward and not misquoting anyone.
Chair, if you may indulge me, just one final point, deconstructing that corner and, and this information is available and I urge all councillors, again, to read all of the information. It's a three hundred million dollar investment. As a board member, you would ordinarily be required to be across that information. If you don't understand it, go and get help to understand it. To demolish, deconstruct whatever it is, is proposed on that corner that councillor Antonelli is talking about, would require a new DA. And for reasons I can't talk about in public session, but I've discussed directly with councillor Antonelli, why applying for a brand new DA would not be the best outcome for this council or our residents.
Thank you for your, your point of view, thank you. Yes, was it?
I don't think it would require a new DA, it's only floor area, not space.
No, 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 it does.
It's not usage.
Okay. I'll, I'll take it that we um have a difference of opinion and um I'll, I'll, I'd say that's probably exhausted. Um councillor Augustine?
Uh um I would just like to um add that this particular business that we're talking about, I um have, I understand that the site is very problematic. We've not had um anyone else tender for it, uh put in any expression of interest. I recently have been um searching for a business like this. I come into uh Nicholas Street nearly every single day, Monday to Friday. And for me, this sort of business um would be, you know, um beneficial to the precinct of anyone that works here would be able to um go there. Um so for me, I think it is, and I stated in um our meeting previous, that I think it's very beneficial to the area, complimentary, and that's why I'll be supporting it.
No, thank you. Um look, I have a, I guess a personal view that I would love to have the children's art gallery, there was a, a lot of work and, and, and science um eh behind it. Um that, I guess, I also know that it's a space that's not getting any rent. Um the business that's going in there, I think is a fantastic business. I think they'll be warmly welcomed. I do think it's complimentary, I understand in this group that's, that's not necessarily, that some believe it is, is, it isn't. Um so, and I think that um the people in the CBD will warmly um utilise this business. And I just want to say to that potential tenant that the discussion that we've been having isn't, isn't about them, it's been some, just some discussion with the history of the Nicholas Street Precinct. So I just want to be really um clear and, and not offend anyone there. Um is there anything else to be said?
Reluctantly, mayor, could I, I feel it might be helpful uh to, to add that without, in any way, uh commenting on what's been discussed, to add information that the team is uh very keen collectively to ensure that um we work with the proposed lessy on the design of the facade of, of the um tenancy. Um but also that we work um and do the best possible job we can in a financially responsible way to work on the, the presence of that intersection on the corner of Allenborough and Brisbane Street, the facade of the venue building itself, um whether we look at some public art uh grant funding and opportunities to, to really um present the best possible uh face uh of that building to the top of town, which is very, very important to Ipswich Central, as you know, better than I. So we will do our very best to make it an appealing and attractive connection um between the top of town and the um, the precinct. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. I'll take what I said before as my right of reply as the, as the mover. We'll now move into a vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. So it's myself, councillor Madden, um councillor Cullen, councillor Antonelli and, and councillor uh Augustine. Uh those against, thank you, um it's councillor Madden, councillor Tully and uh councillor um councillor Doyle. So the motion did get up um and we proceed. I'll now move on to the ni- next item in fifteen point six, which is item two, which is the um Nicholas Street Precinct Approval for an Agreement of Lease for Tenancy MM2 Venue. Just to orient people, that's where, that may have got um general public, it's the space over to, to the right of there, uh on the, on the ground floor. Um I look at, does anyone like to go, would anyone like to go into closed session for this particular matter? Ask anything? If not, my recommendations A through to E. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Augustine. Um I guess in, in moving this, I see this as a uh absolute compliment to, to the mix that's in, in venue and I think that'll be well received by our, by our people. And I think it's um for people who are going to the movies or coming as families, it'll be um very well received and, and used as well. I'll open up for any other discussion.
Um, thank you, mayor. Um I too, um really delighted um to see this one come through. Um venue is about food and entertainment, so um I see this appealing to um particularly families, but potentially a wider audience for those big kids that are adults out there. Um yeah, really, really excited and thank the team for their hard work yet again, um bringing another lease to us.
Thank you. So councillor Augustine, did you wish to speak?
Oh yes, I'm, also, I think it's going to be very complimentary to the other businesses that are there. Uh standalone, I'd have a, a big issue, but I think with the other businesses, they complement each other and look forward to the young kids having a great time.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli.
Much to um councillor Doyle's shock, she might be pleased to know that I do think that this is complimentary to uh the existing tenancies.
Okay, I, I don't think you should have prefaced it that way, but yes, I'm glad to see that you uh support this. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item sixteen point one, we're going to the uh officers' report. So the first one is the CEO Organisational Performance Report for May twenty twenty four. Does anyone have any questions of the CEO on this report? No, in that case, I will move that the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for the month of May twenty twenty four be received and the contents noted. Have a second to councillor Augustine, thank you. In moving this, it's good to see that council has been successful in a, in SES support grants for twenty tw- twenty twenty four, twenty five in an operational all terrain vehicle and trailer. Uh council and our local SES stands side by side through storms and floods and bushfires and we will continue to support the hardworking volunteers of the SES as they are often asked to get out of their warm beds and put themselves in harm's way to assist our community. Uh the new vehicle and trailer will help them do that safely. Um also notes, really pleased to see that we've received forty thousand dollars from a showcasing Queensland heritage grant. We are the co- the state's oldest provincial city and we have a history of more than six thousand heritage listed sites within Ipswich. Uh this funding will contribute to our Festival of Heritage Galvanised, which will return on the twenty ninth of August and run through the eighth of September. And I'd like to thank the Queensland Government for allocating these funds to the Ipswich Community. I'll open it for other discussion. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll now move on to item sixteen point two, the, the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the thirtieth of May twenty twenty four. I don't know if the member of that committee would like to move that particular report? Yes?
And uh Risk Management Committee uh number twenty twenty four oh two of the thirtieth of May twenty twenty four be received and uh adopted.
Thank you, I have a second for that. Thank you councillor Madden. Any discussion? Thank you councillor Antonelli.
I must admit, I did forget to press my button when I moved that, my apologies, mayor. Um um I'm, obviously um audit and risk management can uh be quite a dry topic for many people, but I might um talk if I'm my maid to uh item sixteen. It was very pleasing to hear um that, that council is taking a very concerted and um involved um view in relation to psycho social risks and compliance. And for those who aren't aware of what psycho social risks are, um they are in relation to, I guess, our mental health and wellbeing and uh, and our mind space within council and our employees. And this is something that is having an impact right across the nation in every workforce. So um this council has been quite uh productive and proactive in this space and it's uh, and now the uh Risk Committee is just taking a closer look at that to ensure that we're, we're heading in the right direction, which is quite um, quite uh good to know. And I think that that's something that uh our employees would be quite um appreciative of as well.
Thank you, any other discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item sixteen point three is the monthly financial performance report and I'll move that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending thirty first of May twenty twenty four, submitted in accordance with section two oh four of the local government regulations of twenty twelve, be considered and noted by council. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. Um since speaking to it, um I note the operating result being fifteen point four million deficit, I guess a budget deficit of thirteen point seven million is unfavorable but, and is driven by council's operating expense streams being greater than budget expectations across a number of areas. Um I guess we just have to look at how we um now, at, right at the end of the, of the financial year, but I just, I just note that there and, and we'll see what happens in the, the next report. I'll open it up for discussion. Okay, in that case, I'll put it to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move to sixteen point four. Which is on the appointment of urban utilities board members. Does anyone have any questions of, of the local council officer? Um I guess I six in consideration, I'm happy to move all these A, B, C at once, or unless you wanted to do, I'm going to nod from the Chair of the Financing Governance Committee, okay? You're okay, so I'll, I'll move recommendations A, B and C together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. I'll open it up for discussion. Thank you, councillor Madden.
I just would li- like to know if um, has this, have, have these appointments effectively been endorsed by the majority um proponent Brisbane?
I haven't checked that, I'll check this.
They have been endorsed by the majority, but uh as you are aware, there's uh two other minority participants required.
Yeah, so I just wanted to know purely as a point of principle before voting, just clarifying, whether or not our decision actually materially affects the appointments today.
I, I understand that it does.
It does, yeah.
It may stand corrected, but the latest advice I had was that there was the majority participant, Brisbane City Council had approved it from their perspective and one other minority participant.
Yep.
I'll advise if otherwise, but that's my understanding.
Is that the ruling, is it, is it just Brisbane and one other?
No, it's two other, which is why.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I just found the language endorse a bit. Yeah, anyway, uh happy to proceed, um understanding that. I just recall previously with appointments, um the matter was put to us, but our vote, like our, I guess the view of the council actually didn't matter previously.
I think we were the last ones for it to come to.
Yeah, exactly, so this is a point of principle for, for voting, I just wanted that clarified where the other councils were at. Um thank you.
Through the chair, I believe we discussed this last time, we're not the approving authority, so we're endorsing it for then ultimate approval, but again, I, I'm, I can check that if required.
Yeah, yeah, I believe that's correct, but last time it was at a point where.
It, we, we.
But anyway, like it is what it is.
Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. The next matter is a late report, I guess we'll go into why it's late. Um so I do need a um council's permission to, for us to consider it. Um so I move that in accordance with section nine point three point two of council's meeting procedures policy, that council grant permission for consideration of item sixteen point five titled procurement renewable energy power purchase agreement. Uh do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. Thank you, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. Um thank you, that's um, yeah, so now we can now consider the matter. Um so thank you very much. Um so the item is sixteen point five and there are three recommendations for the procurement of renewable energy uh power purchase agreement. I just want to ask probably one question that you could answer, CEO, but um as to why the matter came late, because obviously procurement would normally go through the financing governance committee. I know that energy ones are a little bit special, but would you like to? Oof, well, Mr Smith?
I can do that, we have been working hard to get this one uh through.
I can do that, we have been working hard to get this one uh through and you've just given the very time-sensitive deals that are put forward in the energy industry, they are often, as you would have noted from previous reports in the previous term of council, uh they do come uh often requiring a sort of special condition or consideration, given the the time sensitivity of trying to get the best possible pricing that we can for council. Hope I've got that right, Mr Smith, please feel free to, it's a.
He's nodding, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Um may I ask uh Ms Cavanagh to come to the lectern?
Good afternoon, uh Kay Cavanagh, general manager at Environment Sustainability.
Uh Ms Cavanagh, um do you mind outlining what council's uh our commitment is to reducing our our carbon footprint? Um and how this particular agreement may impact it?
So our commitment in the adopted sustainability strategy is to meet a fifty percent reduction in our carbon emissions by twenty twenty six. By entering into this power purchase agreement, we achieve that for our scope one and scope two emissions, which are essentially the generated emissions from our own activities as well as from our electricity supply. So this goes um a long way towards that, which is fantastic, um and allows us to achieve that target um through this power purchase agreement.
Um is this how normally organisations do it, or do they buy offsets, or what what's your experience?
Uh there's a mixed way in which um organisations will achieve their targets, primarily it is through offsets, we've found, which means that you don't have as much control over where that um offset might be generated from. This actually, through this process, we've stipulated that it needs to be a genuine renewable energy project within Queensland. Uh so it's a great outcome for Queensland and for ourselves, yep.
Thank you, Ms Cavanagh, any other questions to Ms Cavanagh? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move recommendations A through to C. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully, thank you. Um in in speaking to this, um obviously you've got the um the cost of what of going into this uh agreement, but I'm really pleased that um in doing this, we will achieve our uh carbon emissions reduction early. Uh you know, in twenty, eh sort of um earlier than than we had planned. Uh and also to see that the the result of that will be actually in Queensland as opposed to an overseas um offset as well, so I think it's a very ethical way, um and I think an appropriate way to do that, so I'll be supporting this. But I'll open up for other discussion. Thank you councillor Tully.
Yeah, thanks, mayor, just very briefly, yes, I'm supportive of this and timing is of the essence with these uh sorts of contracts as well, it's for seven years and uh three months. It's part of our sustainability strategy from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty six, and um I know it is a a late report, but it's uh fairly uh clear uh what's being proposed and how it will benefit uh our community.
Thank you councillor Tully, I agree. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Item seventeen, notices of motion. Uh eighteen, questions on notice, none. In that case, I will close the meeting at ten, uh ten past twelve. Thank you very much.